Okay. All right, Board of Selectmen, you're gonna stay here in the room with me, this room.
All right, I'm out. Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye. So, we have asked the three of you to hang out a little bit after this meeting so that we can make two votes. The first is I recognize and realize that we never actually made a vote on the library. I had printed you a document, but that document you viewed at the meeting didn't have the final tally, like the total amount, and so I had provided that document to you after, but it missed it on the agenda, so I just need you to look at the library agenda.
Is everybody gone except us?
Yeah, I have CJ, but I can move him right now.
He's frozen. He hasn't moved in like, unless he's dead, and I know he's not. He's frozen. Well, he hasn't moved in like a minute, so.
There we go. I just removed him, so I did that for him. So, say that again?
This is budget 610?
610, yes.
So Mallory?
Yes.
The budget you gave us, is that dated March 19?
Um, it should be.
That's what I have, Mr. Chairman.
At first taste, I can share the screen.
He's just talking about the date in the corner, right, under the number?
Yes.
On Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yep, March 19.
I have a note on mine that says 318 held reprint because I had forgotten to select a certain row, and it didn't tally the amount, so you were like, I don't know, I don't have the amount.
So let's hear that. Are you, oh, I'm sorry, Madam Administrator.
No, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna ask, is that what you have, Selectman Goulart, March 19?
No, the bottom right-hand corner, I got 13020.
Okay, so I'm gonna share this screen. Everything is the same, Selectman Goulart, except the total amount.
Mallory, can you just speak a little bit closer to the?
Yes, I'm sorry. Everything is the same except that total amount, so the figures you see in the lines, there's been no change to that, and the total budget would be 264, 229.
So, what you're showing us is the Google Doc?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, 265, 199 is their total budget request. My fault, I'm sorry.
That's what I have, Madam Administrator. Can I, Mallory?
Yep.
I'm not sure if Nancy can follow on your screen, so either now or maybe after the meeting, can you go to File and then download as PDF and then email her that, so she has it? Download PDF, yep. Yep, it's gonna print, it's gonna ask.
Ah.
For.
So I only want one section?
Yep, pick your page. I just wanna make sure, I don't know if she can follow on the screen, sometimes it's tough even for me, so if you could just send her that. Do you want this, Nancy, for your records?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, the one that I've got that's dated January 30th is the one I had on the 18th because I split table to future meeting.
Right, because you should have in your, like maybe the page ahead of that should be the updated one, but if it's not there, I'm gonna get it over to you.
Yeah, you just didn't get the reprint with the total, Selectman.
Okay. The other thing I'm gonna need is the sheets that you showed tonight that were relative to DR because when I was looking at my latest DR stuff from the meeting I attended at the school, it's not the same numbers, so I need the latest DR stuff.
You also want that, Selectman Patiko and Selectman Zagravas?
Madam Administrator, I believe I have access to that. If it's not in the Google Doc, please send it to everybody. I'll put it that way, sorry.
Yes.
I'm sending that to you now, and then I can get you this document, Nancy.
Okay.
Why do I only get this part? How do I just get current, oh yeah, current sheet? Here we go.
Yeah, that's what I do, and then it's just this 610.
Yeah, because I don't wanna give her the whole thing, I would just be.
She has the rest of it, I assume.
Exactly. So, Selectman Goulart, can I mail this, email this to your, oh, all right, can I email this to your Comcast account and you'll get it?
Yes.
Right now?
Yep.
Do you have a printer, Selectman Goulart?
Yep.
Okay, good.
So the other thing that's on the agenda tonight is the Gilbane contractors' request to keep the...
Excuse me, do you want us to vote on this library budget?
Oh, yes, I'd love that. I thought you were waiting on me to get you this document. If you're good to vote on it.
No, no, no. I just want the document to put in here for the.
Oh, okay, I'll take care of that at the office, I'm sorry.
The budget that we're looking at is a total of 265, 199?
Yes, even, there's no sense.
So, um... All right, so before I make the motion, it would be 265, 199, but they've got an increase in there for those, um...
Library assistance.
Yeah, so I gotta say.
Because that contract has to be filed.
Correct, they're the same union as the clerical.
So should we take that increase out?
You have on the other budgets you've looked at, and I make a note on the budget document that says that, you know, your vote is because it hasn't been voted on yet.
Yeah, I think we do what we've done in line with the other departments who had CBAs that weren't settled.
Right, so what's the amount of money I should be putting in this motion?
Now I gotta, we'll be level funded, right?
Let me get my calculator out.
Well, we would just level fund, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Okay, no need for a calculator, so it would be?
Hold on, I'm just...
If it's level funded, it would be 260, $260,099.71, no?
No, 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 because it's just the salaries that are level funded. So, I, oh, hold on, let's do this.
Let me do this, I'm sorry.
It's okay, and I don't have my calculator naturally, so I'm gonna have to use my.
I actually found one in my, in my room.
Well, while Mallory's doing that, I got one other question. Do we need to vote the ConCom budget with a $100 increase because we voted level funding?
We need to, if you wanna go back and revise that, that's fine, if, you know, you don't have to do that.
I'm just asking my fellow board members what they want me to do.
For that particular, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, you go.
Yeah, no, that's not on the agenda for tonight, so we can't vote on that. But we're gonna review, after the Finance Committee looks at the budget and makes their recommendation, we're gonna look at everything again, and we'll make our recommendation, so.
No, it is on the, it is on the agenda, we got a joint meeting. It's just that the FinCom left, we're still here, and our agenda shows ConCom, that's why I'm asking.
I'm gonna, your meeting, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna default to you on this. I'm not punting, I just...
Yeah.
If you wanna take a vote, I'll take a vote because it's $100 and I feel like I'll support it, but it's you, it's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
It doesn't bother me, but we're gonna look at all the items anyway in the future. I think we oughta just hold off on this. I suspect that we're all gonna agree to the $100 increase, but that won't speak for the rest of the board.
Yeah, that's all right. I only brought it up because it's on the agenda and I didn't want it to drop through the cracks.
No, I think, I think, yeah, no, I appreciate you bringing it up, Selectman Goulart. To the Chairman's point, I think what you're saying, Mr. Chairman, correct me if I'm wrong, is we'll save time by just doing this all together at the end, right?
Yeah, yes.
I'll share my screen again to show, this is a 2% increase for Jocelyn based on her last year in line with what you've given other well-performing people. I don't have her evaluation in front of me, so I can't verify her score, but I'm assuming it's, she's a great employee, so I can't.
There were only two below 80.
Yeah.
So she gets 2%.
I don't do hers, the Board of Trustees does.
Oh.
So I have to go back and look at it. I remember her self-evaluation, she was incredibly hard on herself, and we had a whole conversation about it, but I don't remember the score. The folks that work there under the union, I've levels funded their salaries. I will check that with Chris Laviulet just to let you know because those might include one or two extra days based upon.
Hold on, can I ask you a question about that? Just your first statement, you said they were level funded, but your recommendation is $3,000 more than what it said the departmental request is, so did you wanna clarify? I may have missed something.
I just edited the departmental request. The department request was 123, 275.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry, you just didn't change the last column, my apologies.
I can't, I'm actually gonna revert this back when we're done because this is a department request. I did it so that it would total.
Sure.
260, 979, 71, so that we could get a quick figure for you guys to vote on.
Can I have that number again, please?
And Madam Administrator, that's with the salaries level funded, so we can?
That's with the union, the union employees level funded, but a 2% for Jocelyn. If you want me to change that, you let me know and I'll fix it.
No, I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I know you and the Town Administrator do attend meetings of the library trustees, I have not. Do you feel, I feel comfortable, I would be surprised, I would be actually shocked if Jocelyn, if the library director did not earn the 2%, so what are your thoughts on that? Because I know you actually go to the meetings, you see the dynamic and, you know.
Oh, absolutely, she deserves the 2%, no doubt.
I feel comfortable with it, so I'm comfortable with that number, 260, 979, yeah.
And if you remember last year when she went before the board, she was asking for an increase, and she compared it to salaries of local library directors, and she was well below a lot of the library directors.
Correct.
So, I'm okay with 2%.
Yep.
So, are we all set?
I believe so.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve a total library budget of 260,979.71, which excludes an increase because the collective bargaining agreement for clerical has not been settled, and that we forward this to the Finance Committee with our recommendation.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain, the ayes have it. The second item that we have is Gilbane's request to extend road closure to 5:00 p.m. Madam Administrator, you have some information on that?
Yes, thank you. Tonight, Tom Farah, Highway Superintendent, discussed with Gilbane, the contractors, their request to continue the road closure and extend it. They're looking for us to allow them to continue the road closure of Center Street between the 138 and the bridge until 5:00. Right now you have it closed from 7:00 to 3:00. They did hit some weather snags, they did have some snafus with hitting gas main, so there are some delays. They're looking for, they're asking us to look, to start, to allow them to keep the closure until 5:00 p.m. starting this week and next week. Superintendent Ferry and I are both uncomfortable starting it this week because we can't get notice out, even if that is how you vote. We can't adequately prepare our residents to tell them the change, we can't communicate that quickly enough. So I, my request is that you only entertain extending it for next week until 5:00, but we have received some negative feedback about the closure. It's quite a lengthy detour, it's not very fun, but them finishing next week really does coincide nicely with the lifting of the executive order on essential workers. So, that's just why it's here for you to discuss.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So, she may make a statement and then a question because she alluded to the negative feedback. Some of it was folks who live in that general area but are not part of the folks who can use Center Street, folks in Stilgate, Lanning, the orchard, folks who are still going to work right now, who are essential workers, who were upset that the road was closed starting at 7:00 a.m. So I know that they will be upset if the closure is extended to 5:00 p.m. And then essentially what will happen is we will have added 30 minutes at least onto their commute, assuming they, you know, live in Dayton, obviously. I took the detour once, Mr. Chairman, I actually forgot that it was closed, and so I drove down that road in Berkeley, had to take the right, go all the way to Taunton. It is a bit of an inconvenience, and I guess my question for the Town Administrator is, is it not possible that they could continue doing 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. and tack on extra days for the work instead of doing it to 5:00 p.m. and condensing the days? I know, I know that's a lot to ask, but I really have a lot of reservations about extending this and making the life of our essential workers that much more difficult. I know it's a balancing act, I should say that.
They talked about operating on Saturdays to try to help with that, but there, you know, it will end up lengthening the project, you know, by another week, I would say. So, you're already closed. I have reservations myself about staying closed till 5:00. 7:00 to 5:00 is a long time, that's a long time.
My point is, to my colleagues and to you, Madam Administrator, I'm okay extending it from the date that we set as the deadline, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., but I do have reservations extending it past that deadline, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Well, my concern would be is that the stay-at-home order right now in Massachusetts is until May 18th, and if more workers are allowed to go to work on May 18th or after, it will be more people that would be inconvenienced versus us extending it to 5:00 p.m. for next week, and they claim that they can get it all done next week. That would be my concern. I understand the inconvenience, but I'm not sure it's avoidable. Anybody else?
My feeling is, they get one week that extends to 5:00 p.m. That's next week, and they are told point-blank, you better get it done because you're only gonna get one week that stretches to 5:00 p.m. If you don't get it done, that means another week of misery for the people that use that road, but you're gonna be limited to 7:00 to 3:00 because I don't wanna give them a 5 o'clock extension that they think they can do this. Now, I'll also say, if we happen to get torrential rains and it's impossible to do the work, that's a different ballgame.
Yes.
But if it's misty and just miserable, foggy, you don't do the work. So, I would be amenable to one week that stretches out to 5:00 p.m., but only one week. And my concern about working on Saturdays is for those people that have to go to work that are already being inconvenienced, a Saturday closure is another misery, I think. I mean, I remember having to drive around for two and a half years to get to Berkeley to drop my son off for babysitting back in the day when the bridge was closed. So I'm trying to minimize the misery, that's why I'm saying we're talking five days, we're talking 10 hours max, but Gilbane's gotta be told this upfront. This is not gonna drag on and on.
I think what the Town Administrator and what Selectman Goulart have said, I will support that, and I do think we need to make it clear to them that they do need to finish the work within the allotted time. I do also agree that we should not do this week because we will definitely hear it if this goes into effect tomorrow, and rightfully so. And so I think that's palatable, and I think that's something we can live with. I think the context that I keep trying to remind myself to my colleagues is that in the broad range of things and the broad scope, now is the time to do roadwork. And so I'll support it. I mean, now is the time, we have the least amount of people on the roads, so.
You know, if there's also, also if there is a way that even a handmade sign on the Berkeley side and the Dayton side that says something like, "Important notice, from next Monday to next Friday, the workday is being extended by two hours." So the people who might not otherwise get the message are going to see that because we had to do that with the Berkeley-Dighton Bridge when we had some things happen that didn't fall within the regular announced closings, so just a thought.
And to that point, that's a great point, Selectman Goulart, and I think that definitely should be part of this vote and what we make clear to the people doing the construction. What I also wanna ask is, do we all agree that an additional memo should be created that we can post on our website and the Facebook page just to let people know of the extension and the different hours?
Yeah.
I agree, yep.
Yep, and as a matter of fact, if we could send a notice to the Taunton Gazette, a news article, I don't wanna pay for this, but a news article that indicates that additional hours will be required during the week of May?
May 11 through the 15th.
Through the 15th, yes.
Yeah.
And then I'm, if everyone's okay, I'm prepared to, you know, if you're accepting motions, Mr. Chairman.
Make your motion, please, yep. Okay, Brett.
I was gonna let our legal analyst, but I'll do it.
I'm waiting, Brett, I'm waiting for you here, okay, Mr. Chairman.
You may need to amend this, Selectman Goulart. Mr. Chairman, I motioned that we extend the construction on Center Street.
Lane closure.
Road closure, excuse me, through the week ending May 15th, or ending May 15th, for the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Effective May 11.
Effective May 11.
Through May 15th, right? Second.
There a second? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it? Do we have anything else? What are we going to discuss, Mallory? Obviously we can't do it now, but the vacation time, have it? The vacation time, yeah.
Yes, so I actually added that to our budget document. I have the total liability, I've asked Chris Laviulet to calculate based upon different scenarios. So, I can share with you my thoughts, and then we'll put it on the next meeting agenda, May 13th. If you want me to put this on for your next meeting with the Finance Committee, let me know, we'll change that around. So, we have the total amount that it's gonna cost to pay everybody out. My recommendation is that you do two weeks, because everybody gets that buy right, like it's contracts and stuff, so you allow people to do up to two weeks, carried over into FY '21, just like normal, just like we would normally do. Anybody who has more than that, there should be parameters. You either take, you know, you're forced to take a week before June 30th, you're forced to, you either buy back one where the town pays you for one week, and then maybe you're allowed an additional week to bring over, something like that. We kind of podge-podge different things together to really chomp down at that total liability. So, Chris Laviulet and I are working on different, you know, how much that total cost would be. We now have to parse out who has less than two weeks, because then they really aren't a problem, right? They're not a funding problem. Who has more than two weeks? And, you know, what that looks like, so we just have to get those figures together.
Okay.
The rest of them. We have the total, but.
May I make just a general statement?
Always, for me.
I'm a little hesitant, so if it raises more discussion than I, that is not what I intended. But in read, in just going over in general the different collective bargaining agreements, I do think that we are going to have to, we are not gonna be able to tell anyone to take a payout. We are gonna have to give people some kind of a choice.
Option.
Yeah.
We have.
And that's just a general statement, like I don't have an opinion, I haven't seen the data. None of us have, so I'm curious to see it, but it's not gonna be a simple, like, all or nothing, you know? We're gonna have to figure out what is gonna be the most economically friendly to both the employee and the town, and it's gonna be a balancing act, but.
Well, that's why I like pulling from different things, get the two weeks, buy right, and that's just like every other year, and then there's these other options. So, we're working on that, and, you know, we have one employee that has seven weeks because of, you know, not because she's doing anything wrong, but because of a myriad of issues that she was actually not able to take all of her vacation, and then she brought vacation over from previous year. If she were to be paid out seven weeks vacation, number one, that's expensive, but her tax hit would be unfair.
No, no, you don't do it that way. When you pay somebody a lump sum and it's for a period of weeks, you calculate the tax per week and multiply it by the number of weeks. You don't hit them with a lump sum because it's an automatic 25% federal and like whatever they hit you with state. Same thing as paying teachers for the summer at the end of June. The ones that say, "I wanna get all my money before I leave," you don't do it that way, nope, there's tax rules.
No, I mean about W2s. What does that mean for a W2? Does it show up that you've received, in this case, like seven extra?
It's based on your total income, and that's why with, when you do it, you determine, how can I say this? You determine what the tax liability would be in total, you divide it by the number of weeks, you look at the tax table based on what the person is claiming for exemptions, and then you figure out the way to do it so it's legal, and also the person doesn't get whacked. They don't pay too much and they don't pay too little.
No, I, do you mind if I follow up, I'm sorry?
Oh, I don't mind at all.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any, like, I don't have the data in front of me, so I really don't, like, I don't have an opinion at all. I guess in just reading the language in the CBA, you have to give those people an option, like either take your vacation or take the payout. I don't think we have it, Selectman Goulart, maybe you can work with Chris on this or let the Town Accountant know these things. I don't think employees are aware of how we're thinking about how it would work. This is now the time to have that discussion. I'm all ears, I guess is what I'm saying, but I do think that if you have to give a subset of employees an option by virtue of their contracts, then you should extend that option to everyone whether they have that in a contract or not. I guess that's my framework of thinking for this, not having any other.
That's why I wanna give you all, all of those parameters when we're sitting down with that document in front of us, and you can make your decision.
Yeah.
Based upon all of that information.
Sure.
Because there is a lot that goes into it, and let's just face it, I think people have said it a billion times, I'll say it again, this has never happened before, like, something like this is just not, you know, it seems to be like perfect storm, perfect timing, you know, now we have this issue. So, to Selectman Patiko's point, we have a little more data to get for you so that you can see different scenarios, and then that will be a topic for an agenda item.
Yeah, and just to follow up, when I raised this issue and I said they can have a choice, I agree with Dr. Z. I don't wanna cram anything down anybody's throat, and quite frankly, including the town of Dayton, but we have got so many unknowns, and we're talking about two fiscal years. We aren't just talking about getting through June on this because if there is a carryover into the next year and this virus, God only knows, they're saying if it comes back, it'll be, we don't even know. And that's why I raised the issue of, do we really wanna carry forward an unfunded liability and end up with two weeks vacation for a number of people, and then July 1st they pick up their full vacation? It just, it just seems, it's a snowball, and we're just trying to stop the snowball and figure out the best way to do everything for everybody, you know?
I totally agree. Do you know what might be helpful for me when we have this conversation, Selectman Goulart? I believe you were elected first in 2007. If you could prepare some, I know you have a ton of work, so I'm not asking you to do more work, but if you could prepare some sort of bullet points on how the board at that time confronted the economic crash, this is sort of similar to that in a way because we've come to a complete halt in terms of business, that might be helpful. because we've come to a complete halt in terms of business. That might be helpful at, or at least instructive as well, on how, how we want to proceed.
Nothing we did affected one single employee. It did not affect the town budget. I can, I can, yeah, I can tell you, how, how did we make it to the end? Yeah, I can tell you that. It didn't affect any employees, and during that several years of the economy going south, um, we had people retire or resign. We didn't lay anybody off, but we didn't fill positions either. So that's how, another way of reducing expenses. Street Department went, I don't know, two and a half years with a vacancy. Um, I think police, um, did the best they could with reserves. Um, and we know reserves don't get paid what full-time police officers get, even on overtime. But, um, unfortunately, the mess we, we're potentially dealing with not only affects employees for the next, this fiscal year and the next, it affects the total town budget, and the shortfall, the shortfall we're looking at this year was, it's overwhelming compared to what we had to deal with back, back then, when we thought that was overwhelming. That was a piece of cake now that I look back. But yes, I can put something together.
I appreciate.
So I, so I started this conversation, I said, when we wanted to discuss this, apparently we wanted to discuss this tonight. But when, when can we vote on this? Do we want to do it Thursday after the, uh, planning committee meeting? Put this as an agenda item for us? Rather than wait till next Wednesday?
Well, when, and when will we have that data, so we can review that before the meeting?
Yes.
Well, I mean, I'm not trying to make excuses for myself. Um, I'm, like, really busy. Uh, so today we focused on pandemic and stuff, and I'm getting ready for the department head meeting for Thursday. Um, I mean, I can, I think, you know, I told Chris, and he said that he had time to, to do the calculations. I mean, we can just make it work.
Yeah, I don't think this falls on you. It's just, if you could oversee the accountant pri, or the accounting office, I should say, prioritizing this.
Well, I mean, we, we have, like, the, the big piece, we already have. I sent it to you. So that's the hardest part to compile. I, you know, any of us can take that data and plug it in. So we'll, we'll do it for Thursday, if that's what you want. It doesn't involve a revised, um, meeting agenda outside of the 48 hours. If you're comfortable with that, we'll go forward.
Mallory, actually, I would prefer this to be on the regular Board of Selectments meeting, because that's where it came up. Employees are wondering what's going on. The other thing too is, if we make the decision at the next BOS meeting, the clock is ticking, because we've also got to have the procedure to say to them, by the way, folks, if you want to take vacation between now and June, we need to know by this date if, if this is going to happen. We got deadlines. I mean, we're already into, we'll be into the middle of May already. So I think a Board of Selectments meeting is the place to do it. Um, I would just assume have Thursday wrap up budget and go through the articles with the FinCon, and let's get that behind us, so we're not melding all this stuff in together.
Madam Administrator, can I ask you one last question? That levy, uh, limit figure of us being over the levy limit, not even including the special warrant articles, that's not including a potential buyback of vacation or anything like that, right?
No, that's not, that's, no, that's two different fiscal years. Nothing to do with it.
Right. That levy is for department requests, so all the stuff that you did to chop down at the total amount, that's not accounted for in that. Okay. Um, Chris Laviolette originally had our free cash fund in there. We don't, we don't backfill like that. Um, and then it's also a really conservative, uh, estimate on, um, receipt. And Building, Building Commissioner Jim Aguirre has, he, he's pretty busy. Um, there's things going on, and we had a conversation today about him rolling out his online permitting software, so that it's less contact, and he can kind of have that up and running for when we reopen. So I expect that will increase, because it's so easy, it will increase the, the amount we have at one time. Um, so, yeah, that, if you want, I can fiddle with numbers and plug in what you guys have come up with, and you can see that.
Mr. Chairman, do you, do you have an opinion on when we should have this conversation? I mean, I know you want to have it. I understand we want to have this conversation as soon as possible. I do also understand that if it happens at a FinCon meeting, um, are any of our meetings being actually livestreamed right now? Let me ask that.
No, uh, well, we haven't, we had that one livestream when Selectman Goulart came into the, to the office, and we took care of that. It was just, it's easier to just upload afterwards.
So then I.
Haven't done live.
That being said, Mr. Chairman, I guess my opinion is, since none of these meetings are being livestreamed, then i- i- if we want to have the conversation Thursday, okay, because it's going to be a recorded meeting that we put on YouTube. If you want to have it on Wednesday, okay.
Are they showing our FinCon meetings? Or just our budget workshop meetings?
They're showing everything.
Going on YouTube, Selectman Goulart. They're not livestreamed. They are replayed, though, on Channel 9. They should be.
Our, our content has actually increased.
I'm going to, uh, let Mrs. Goulart make that decision, since, uh, she was the one that brought it up initially. So I think it's appropriate that we, we listen to her as what she wants to do.
I'm going to be selfish, and I'm going to tell you, I will not be ready for Thursday night. Um, I've got, I got webinars coming out of my ears, but they're important. One backed into the other one, and I missed a good one today, that they all relate to Stormwater, the MS4. I got another one Friday. Um, I would just as soon do this for a regular meeting, so I can get some information to, uh, Mallory, and it'll be an outline of what happened during, let's say, 2007, eight, nine, whatever I can come up with.
I appreciate that.
It's, it's just some history. It's not, um.
Yep.
Employees were not affected, but I'm going to be selfish and say, I'm not going to be ready for Thursday night. I can tell you that right now.
I'm okay with waiting for Wednesday, if that's what the board decides. I have no.
Yeah.
It'll also give the accountant and, and the administrator more time, too.
The other thing I'll do is, I will stop and talk to Chris, and, um, Mallory, if, if they're available, I know, I don't want to tie them, come, I know they're busy too, but, um, I haven't been to Town Hall for two days. I will try to stop in tomorrow and just ask Chris some questions, and if he's got questions of me, so that I can focus on what I should focus on for the meeting on Wednesday.
Okay.
So Mallory, we'll have this on the agenda for Wednesday, May 13th.
May 13th, yes. Thank you. I appreciate that. But that helps us out. Uh, I appreciate it.
Anything else?
I got one question. I missed the DR meeting, um, the budget hearing. So obviously, Ed was there and, and some other people. Did either of you sit in on that meeting?
I did, and.
I, yeah, I watched some of it on TV. I, I did not watch the whole meeting, but Brett, I believe you were there, or under the meeting stuff, yep.
I was very surprised tonight that Ed had to bring that up about statutory, and I immediately thought, I hope we're not going to be playing games again. Had enough of that. I don't know.
If, no, so I will not, um, give my opinion, but I did chime in, and I, you know, I said this, uh, when Dr. Azar was there. Ed was asking those questions at that meeting. They knew what was going to be asked. In fact, I believe the Finance Committee Chairman even said that when the district came to present the budget or the assessment, he was going to ask those questions, and so, um, he, yeah, been asking them for a week. I mean.
Did, did Rehoboth sit in on that meeting, either the Selectment or the FinCon?
Yes. Yeah, there was Rehoboth Finance Committee members there.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, there were no curveballs this evening, just, uh, at all.
Okay. Well, I'm glad Ed's hanging tough, because, um, like I say, we don't need a repeat.
Agreed.
I agree.
That's why I brought up Mike, that's why I brought up Mike Malone. Every time somebody says Mike Malone, everyone in Rehoboth shudders.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain, the ayes have it. Thank you, everybody.
Have a great evening. See you tomorrow.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.